I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Mary Cohen, excused. Betsy Dennis, Jennifer Edge, excused. Tracey Antelac Everett, excused. Christine Galbo. We'll see, she's running late. Frank Carnet.
Here.
Georgia Pachin.
Here.
Bill Zoff.
Here.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Dr. Doorwood, would you review the fire exits?
Yes, there are two fire exits located in the rear of the LGM.
Thank you. And would you like to introduce our workshop?
Yes, there will be two parts of the workshop this evening. The first part, I'm going to be presenting to the board on the strategic plan proposal for the district, which you'll be voting on later on in the board meeting. And then Mr. Tim is going to be presenting on our focus plans, which will also be the board will ask to approve later in the meeting.
Okay.
So as we had said for the last several meetings, I was going to be presenting to the board the proposed strategic plan. And this is on the agenda for your approval this evening as well. So what I wanted to start off with doing for the benefit of the audience is to talk a little bit about what went into the development of the plan. When I started in July, I began implementing a series of meetings where I was meeting with individual board members, community members, administrators, union leaders, and others, to try to get a handle on exactly what was happening in the district and then use that as a foundation for the development of a long-range plan. So what you see before you tonight is the results of that. Part of what I want to explain in particular to the audience is that I come from the school of thought that I think it's important for everybody to understand within the organization, the direction that we're going. And the way that that typically happens at the school setting is that the board is asked to approve board goals. In this case, what we're doing is putting in place a longer-range strategic plan, in part because the longer that the vision is in place, the more that people better understand what we're doing, the more likely it is that people are going to get behind that. I'll share a story that I had, a story about a meeting that I had had last year. I was at the School Boards Association meeting and I had the opportunity to sit with the president of the School Boards Association and he was talking to me about how his board had just recently approved or re-approved their plan, which had been in place, I think, for five years at that time. And he was very excited about that because he said he could go to any place in the district and if he were to talk to one of the employees, they would understand this was what we're all about, this is our plan, and this is how we frame all that we do in the district. So having said that, the part in the gray across the top, these would be the overarching goals, the board-level goals. So on the left-hand side, ensure access to rigorous curriculum instruction and assessment that will prepare students for success in college and their career. Underneath of that are a series of what I would refer to as goals at my level, and then within the organization, others are going to be expected to perform or to adopt goals at their own level, or perhaps take actions to achieve the goals that are listed here. So what I'm going to do is maybe start and go through one column at a time. So within that column, the first goal is that administrators and teachers will work collaboratively to develop plans to ensure that academic targets contained in the APPR plan are met annually. So we are in a much different system than we were even several years ago. As a result of the annual professional performance review system, APPR, on a regular basis, teachers and administrators are expected to set targets for academic performance within that plan. So what this is really getting at is that there will be an ongoing assessment of where our kids are and where we need to get them academically. The next goal is that the Beacon City School District has fully adopted the Common Core curriculum by the end of the 2013-14 school year. This curriculum will be implemented in all buildings as appropriate. This will be followed by ongoing assessment of implementation in subsequent years. So what we're really getting at here is that we've adopted the Common Core. We will have one year under our belts by the end of this school year, but it doesn't stop there. It's an ongoing process. We've already begun conversations about where to be go from here. Do we stick with full adoption, or do we begin to adapt the curriculum, still staying within the framework of the Common Core, since that's the assessments that our kids will be taking? But it's an ongoing process. Next is to develop and maintain curricula that will align to state standards. What I'm really getting at here is we do have our Common Core curriculum, but there are other subjects, obviously, that are being taught throughout the district. And part of the long-range goal would be to have a clearly defined curriculum and assessment to make sure that we're in alignment with state and other standards for each of those Next is, in response to the focus and local assistance plan, school identification, the district will develop a comprehensive plan followed by implementation with fidelity. What I really am saying there is that, obviously, there's an obligation on our part to develop the focus plans, which Mr. Tim will be presenting this evening. We also have a local assistance plan required in Lenham for this year. And once those plans are developed, there's specific pieces laid out in the plan and we will be implementing those throughout the year. Develop a culture centered on the model of data-driven instruction. What this is really getting at is the idea that when we are making our decisions at various levels, we should be analyzing the data that's available. So for example, at the beginning of the presentation, I talked about student performance. We should be looking at student performance, trying to figure out what we need to do to keep things on track or to make improvements, as an example. The next goal is to establish best practice standards and implement those in all the buildings. As part of that, all four elementary buildings will provide the same academic experience to the students. And I want to be clear on this point, what we're really saying here is relative to the academic piece, it shouldn't matter which building the kids are in. They should be receiving the same experience in all four of the elementary buildings. But it doesn't stop there. The best practice idea would be go beyond just the elementary buildings into the other buildings as well. We're really talking about having a conversation about what works well at Beacon, and if it's working well, let's make sure that we're doing it in all the buildings where it's appropriate. Next is to undertake a review of our special education programs with the goal of improving the academic experience and success of all of our students. As you may know, and you'll see a little bit more in Mr. Tim's presentation, special education students are one of the subcategories where we tend to have difficulties. So I think it's important to be undertaking a review to make sure that we're doing all that we can to help those students to be successful. And then finally, in that column, is to ensure the full implementation of the district response to intervention plan. This is a plan that was developed, I believe, towards the tail end of last year. Obviously, RTI is a key part of the supports that we put in place for our students who are in need of additional services and supports. And so we want to make sure that that's being followed through on as we go through the course of this year and moving forward. So the next column has a title on it. Create a learning environment centered on strong social-emotional support systems, understanding that this is vital to maintain a safe, nurturing environment where all students can learn and excel. The idea here is that, obviously, this is an academic institution, but part of what we need to be doing is paying attention to those other issues that are going on in the students' daily lives and making sure that we're addressing those so that they can be successful while they're here at school. So within that, my goals would be to conduct a comprehensive review of what leads to dropout. This will be followed by the development of a plan to address dropout, first at the high school and then across the district. Underneath of that is to adopt a proactive approach to school discipline with the goal of reducing student behaviors resulting in disciplinary referrals. What we're really getting at here is we want to be more preventative in nature on our disciplinary approach. I think we've had a lot of success in recent years, I think in particular in the high school, in helping to improve the climate. We want to continue that progress by being more proactive, things such as anti-bullying and things of that nature in all the buildings. Next, we have to develop systems to ensure successful transitions for students as they move from elementary to middle and from middle to high school. This would be a much more explicit approach, making sure that as kids are transitioning, because those transition periods, we know are times when we tend to have difficulties. We want to make sure that we're doing it in a supportive manner as possible so that the kids can be successful. Next on the list is to ensure training of staff and students at all levels in multicultural and diversity awareness. And you'll see that echoed in the presentation that Mr. Tim is going to do in a moment. The next column over is to develop a system that allows us to hire, develop, and retain teachers and school leaders while maintaining high expectations and accountability. So within that area, the first goal that I have listed there is to create a professional development process based on full alignment and integration with identified district needs and district and building goals. The idea here really is that if we've laid out what we believe to be the important issues that the district is facing, when we undertake professional development and when we're making other decisions on behalf of the district, we should remember that this is what we said is important and make sure that we're supporting it with quality professional development as necessary. Next, the district is committed to make continued refinements to the annual professional performance review, or APPR, process with the goal of strengthening instructional practice. I think it's safe to say that all schools are sort of, you know, in the middle of learning this APPR system and trying to make sure that we're continually getting better at it. And so this is an ongoing process. We've already talked a little bit with the two units about the idea of, once we settle on this year's APPR plan, to have it be more of an ongoing discussion about what will be going into the next plan. Align actions in all major areas of focus, including but not limited to APPR, focus and lab plans, and district and building goals. What I was trying to get at here, which I think is just a matter of good practice, there's an awful lot of things that are being pushed from state down to the school level and pressures from the community and pressures to make sure that our students are doing well. So there's an awful lot of work going on. Part of what I think is important, so what's happening at the district level, is to make sure that wherever and whenever possible, that those efforts are sort of intertwined with each other. So part of what you're going to see here tonight is, when Mr. Tim does his presentation on the focus plans, there's an awful lot of overlap between the two. Next, we have to develop a mentoring program for new administrators. There is currently a mentoring program, I think, that's in place within the BEAA. What we're talking about here is more of an active program of administrative support and mentoring for any new administrators. Next, we have implement a goal-setting and monitoring program. This program will be used to help to ensure regular progress toward achieving district and building goals. So what happens here is, as I sort of hinted at the beginning, this is the strategic plan, this is the plan that's going to drive the district for the next three to five years, pending board approval. What will happen from here is I'll be working with the other administrators to make sure that they are putting in place plans that operate within this. They can also do other goals, as long as they don't deviate from what's listed here. In other words, they can be in support of the things that are listed on this goals document. And then the monitoring is a series of regularly occurring meetings where they're meeting with me and tracking their progress toward achievement of goals. And then finally, in that column, we have review and improved current hiring procedures and practices. And then the last column, encourage increased community engagement through outreach and improved communication at all levels. So within that column, we have to develop programs in all buildings that will improve parent and student engagement in the process of improving our schools. So obviously, the example I just gave about tracking, this would be something where the building administrators would be asked to come up with ways within their buildings or their area of assignment that we can be inviting parents and students and helping them to be engaged in what we're doing here to make it a better environment for all. Next, we have review and improve current methods of communication with the community. I think that there's always room for improvement and constant assessment on making sure that we're doing a solid job at communicating with the community, and that can be the larger community, but it could also be within the school community. And then the last goal that I have listed here is to approve the system for informing the public about the school budget. Obviously, it's always important to make sure that the community understands what's happening relative to the budget. Because of that, I think it was important to include it in our long-range plan. Any questions?
You always have a question, a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what we're going to do next, Mr. Tim is going to come up and he's going to be presenting on the focus plan. So remember, we have the high school, middle school, and district focus plans. I'm having him do the presentation because he was responsible for drafting the plan in consultation with myself and others. And I'll be joining in as the EBA, but he'll be doing the main presentation.
Thank you. This portion of the workshop will cover three plans that are required to be approved by the state, or excuse me, to be submitted by the state by August 30th. We are still waiting for feedback from these plans, and we were told that it would be a lengthy process. So therefore, these plans being discussed tonight are subject to change depending upon whether or not we hear feedback from the state. And if that does occur, we will be making modifications and bringing them back to the board, the revised plans for their adoption. Just to provide some history for the reason that the high school and the middle school were designated as focused schools, and as a result, our district was designated as a focused district. New York State has been tracking student progress performance in various subgroups, and that is through an accountability report. The accountability report tracks student performance subcategories through what is called adequate yearly progress, or AYP. Basically, the state projects progress for student performance in each of these subcategories on a yearly basis. In the 2010-11 New York State Accountability Report, two subcategories that did not demonstrate adequate yearly progress were those of students with disabilities and the economically disadvantaged graduation rate. This is also the time period that the state developed a new classification of focused schools, and that is the reason that Beacon has been designated as a focused school and district. So this evening, I'll be providing an overview of the three plans as they relate to the state rubric. The plans are required to adhere to the six tenants that are addressed in the rubric. The plans are posted on board docs and once approved by the board will be posted to the In development of the plans, all the plans were developed in consultation with central administration and the respected building principals. Dr. Walkley also provided insight as an expert educational consultant, and her understanding of the district proved to be very beneficial in developing these plans. After the plans were developed, they were shared with teachers, parents, and administrators, and reviewed and revisions were made. This was all accomplished in August in order to meet the deadline for August 30th to be submitted. The plans adhere to the six tenants of the Diagnostic Tool for School and District Effectiveness. This diagram represents the six tenants that are comprised of this rubric, where tenant one is the district leadership capacity, tenant two is the school leader, practice, and decisions, tenant three is curriculum development and support, tenant four is teacher practice and support, tenant five is student social, emotional, developmental health, and tenant six is the family and community engagement. Last year, both the high school and the middle school were scheduled for review. The high school was reviewed in the spring, and upon conclusion of that review, the person who led the state review met with Dr. Sevading and provided a debriefing report of that review. The debriefing review basically is two to three sentences summarizing the findings of the six tenants. Those are the only review that we have right now. We are still waiting for the full review from the state. When I was in Albany a couple of weeks ago for the Institute around the Diagnostic Tool, I was informed that the state has backed up on providing reports to schools that were reviewed last year. So we are still waiting for that review. Also, last year, the middle school was scheduled for a review, but due to timing issues, that was canceled. Also, while I was in Albany, I was informed that that review will not be rescheduled and that the district is responsible to review both the high school and the middle school So the overview of the plans, I will be discussing an overview of the plans in relation to the six tenants. As mentioned earlier, and I just mentioned, the middle school did not have a review, so they did not have a debriefing report. So based on the state rubric and Dr. Walkley's working knowledge of the district in consultation with Dr. Walkley, excuse me, with Dr. Doorwood, it was decided to use the high school debriefing report to model both plans. The requirements of the district plan is to demonstrate support of the building plan. So as you go through this, I'm going to talk about the two building plans and then show how the district plan supports those plans. So tenant one, it actually only applies to the district plan. But the goals for tenant one would be to develop a comprehensive professional development plan and use data by staff members to establish goals for students and schools. The activities that we'll use is to develop a district improvement team that will assess and monitor the need for professional development, and we will also be using that team to review both the middle school and the high school for this year. The SLO process will be established to allow teachers and principals to track student progress through pre-assessments, mid-year assessments, and year-end assessments. In tenant two, which is school leader practices and decisions, the goal is for everyone to understand and internalize the school vision and goals so that everyone is clear on what we are trying to achieve, much like Dr. Doorwood alluded to earlier this evening. The school goals will be aligned to the district goals and monitored by the superintendent. They'll be communicated through newsletters, website, PTO, and parent communication sessions. The revitalization of the shared decision-making team will provide an opportunity for teachers and parents to provide input on how best to achieve the school goals. The district support, the district will support the building plans, as Dr. Doorwood discussed earlier, through goal-setting process. Furthermore, the district will be allocating funds to increase parent and community involvement through the parent communication sessions that will be funded through the Title I grant. For tenant three, which is curriculum development and support, the goal is to implement the Common Core learning standards. Earlier this summer, the district made the decision to adopt the Common Core learning standards as they are aligned to the state tests. Outside educational consultants will be used to provide professional development for our teachers. Some of our teachers that will be receiving that training will become turnkey trainers, meaning they will continue to train other teachers within the district. The purpose of this strategy is to build an internal capacity for teacher development. The master teacher will have the responsibility of providing professional development during the course of the school day while working with teachers in their classroom. So if approved, the district will hire a .5 master teacher to provide professional development during the course of the school day while working with teachers in their classroom. The funding source will come from the Title II grant. The outside consultants will also be funded through the Title II grant. AmesWeb is an online progress monitoring tool that has an annual subscription, which has been renewed again for this year, and more teacher training will be coming on to how best use this tool. In tenant four, which is teacher practices and decisions, the goal is to diagnose, monitor, and increase student performance. This will be accomplished through the implementation of the recommendations from the literacy committee and the implementation of the response to intervention, or RTI, process. In the middle school, AmesWeb will use to progress monitor students, and at the high school, NOVANet will be used to progress monitor students. Furthermore, Read Naturally, which is an online reading fluency program, will be implemented in the middle school. Additionally, a .5 literacy instructional support teacher will work with teachers to assist struggling students. So for the district's support, we will work with the principals on implementing the literacy strategies along with the RTI recommendations, and if approved, the district will hire a .5 literacy instructional support teacher, and that will be funded through the Title I grant. Ideally, this would be the same person as the master teacher, where half of the salary would come from the Title II grant and half of the salary would come from the Title I We would also be purchasing and implementing Read Naturally through the Title I grant. Tenant five, which is student social and emotional health, the goal is to implement a plan to improve social, emotional, and behavioral challenges by working with outside consultants to develop strategies for school and community safety. The district will form a partnership with TACTD from NYU to implement training and cultural competence. The district will also form a partnership with the New York State School Center for School Safety and provide multicultural awareness training for teachers and staff. Tenant six, which is family and community engagement, the goal is to establish and maintain a professional relationship with the community and parents of all subgroups through parent communication nights. The district, if approved, will hire a parent communicated coordinator to plan and implement a variety of parent nights to inform parents of school curriculum and ways to assist students at home. This would be funded through the Title I grant. So the next steps are to continue to implement the plans as administrators work through the goal-setting process discussed earlier and review the high school and middle school this year. So I know that I went through a lot of the plans and showed the district support. This is a new process that the state is requiring school districts to do this year. So if anybody is interested in being part of the process in the future, please notify your children's principal or myself. I look forward to working with everybody as we go through this process, as it is new to both districts and schools and communities. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
The literacy teacher and the master teacher, it sounds like it'll be roughly one full-time position between the two. How do you see that getting split up between the high school and the middle school? I'm assuming that's where most of the time will be devoted?
Yes, it would be mostly in the middle school with the Title I grant, which is the literacy strategies, but the professional development component can move throughout the entire district. So that would have to take some coordination between both the principal of the middle school and the school and the high school and myself to figure out the best way to manage that person from moving from building to building.
Okay. And my other question regarding Title I and Title II. I'm assuming, I could be wrong, we're not getting extra money? Yeah, are we?
No, not extra money.
So if we're going to be funding some of the activities and new staff out of the existing pot of money, what is not going to get funded to compensate for that?
No, this is, Title I and Title II was written in consultation with these plans. So when we wrote the Title I and Title II during the summer, that was incorporated into the Title I and Title II grants.
And then we were given that money?
Yes. Well, we're still waiting for state approval, as we seem to be waiting for a lot of the state.
Right. But I mean, like even these plans, I mean, technically, we're still waiting for state approval, which is why you kind of warned us that when we get feedback from the state, whenever, we may have to make changes to the plans.
Correct.
But I mean, I think one of the reasons we're presenting this tonight is that we've kind of given up waiting for the state because, well, you know, we'd like to start moving forward with improvements, and, you know, if we wait for the state, it could be a while. So that means that we would be also spending the money to try and attain the goals, even though we don't have the title money yet, correct?
Well, the title money would be common. It's just a matter of if the state approves the allocations, which the state is going to support literacy instruction. It would also support professional development, because Title I is revolving around literacy, whereas Title II is revolving around professional development.
But we don't have a timeframe yet.
No, we don't have a timeframe.
So we could be expending money that we don't yet have the income from, which means we'd have to come out of some other area.
Potentially.
Brian, can I just tell something?
Yeah.
And the amount of money that Brian's talking about spending in addition is rollover money from last year.
Okay.
So the money that we normally spend on teacher salary, the continuing expenditures are from the current year, and the plans that Brian had talked about is for rollover money, so there is money available.
And I'm assuming this is not a one-time shot. This is, will be, you know, having the literacy consultants and having the master teachers is not, you know, just for this year, would be something that we'd still want to continue forward into the future.
I think we always, well, we always would want to continue this forward, but.
Right.
In with this.
So at some point, will we not have any more of the title money and have to come out of our standard?
I'm not saying that, but I think it's, obviously, we built it in because we think it's needed, and we'll be assessing to see how it goes. But I think as long as it's something that continues to be of value, it would be something that we continue to look forward for approval, continuation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Madam, motion for excessive discussion. Motion to adjourn to excessive discussion to review the funding of this particular individual. Second.